Doesn't matter if nobody watching it anyway.
Usually have a couple people.
There's like fifty views on all the.
Later.
Good afternoon and welcome to our city council work session. It's Tuesday, September seventeenth, uh, twenty twenty-four and it's five P M. Need to excuse Mayor Olson. He has a family obligation to attend to. Everyone else is here. All the entire city council is present. We need to start with a pledge of allegiance. Would someone please lead us on that?
I'll do that.
Thank you.
Please stand.
Repeat the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And would someone be willing to offer an invocation or inspirational thought?
I can pray.
Thank you.
Our heavenly father, we're thankful that we're able to live in a wonderful community and be surrounded by such great people. We're thankful that we have the privilege to, uh, serve here, um, in our community and, uh, please guide us and, and help us to make the right decisions and bless our community. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. First item of discussion is the MAG senior lunch program funding changes.
Yeah. So mayor and council, mayor pro temp and council and council. We, uh, you, on the agenda for the regular meeting tonight, you will see the funding agreement to approve for the MAG senior meals program that we do. That's funding that MAG provides to us for our senior meals. Um, there's a couple of items in there that we need to discuss on that to let you know where that stands. So going back last year, we received about three thousand dollars more than this current contract. We also during the budget season anticipated an additional amount coming to us. And thus the reason why we started the Tuesday lunches and went from a pilot program last year that was just a couple of months to now doing the, the Tuesday meal. So there's two meals per week, two days per week that do we do a full meal for the seniors. Um, and so at this point in time, the funding that they have put in place or that they're proposing is thirteen thousand dollars less than what we budgeted this current year. Now, the mayor's direction, he has directed us to go and, and work out how we can find to fill that gap of the thirteen thousand dollars, which, which we as staff agree is the way to do that. The only other option is to cut services, right? And, and at this point in time, with the, with having introduced and gone through the pilot and now having a, a full year's plan of having that second meal, it's, it's not likely that we would, that we would cut that. So we still need to keep those services for the, the seniors for that second day and make up the shortfall now in the funding. I believe that this is a result. So the mayor and I met with, with, uh, the representative for MAG a few months ago on this. And we knew this was coming, but we didn't know the amount. We knew that they were going to be restructuring from some things and, and all that kind of stuff. We didn't really know whether it was going to go up or down. They just told us that they were looking at things. I, I believe that this is a, a result of things like COVID money running out. Other, other types of funding that MAG had been getting is now tightening up or gone. And so that's why they've had to take a new look at this increased cost, the same thing we're experiencing. So just to inform you, we will come back at a, at a later date with a budget amendment to, to cover that shortfall. But we just wanted to explain to you and to the public that that's where that stands. And ask if you have any questions, if you have thoughts on, do we continue the Tuesday meal? Do we continue the services the way that we have them? And, and move forward and, and as the mayor has instructed us to, to work to find the funding to close the gap.
What's currently in our budget for the seniors for this program?
Uh, about twenty-one or twenty-two thousand dollars coming from MAG. But this contract is just over eight thousand dollars. So again, you can see the twelve to thirteen thousand dollar gap. That's what we budgeted because we anticipated long before we knew any kind of a, a change was coming, we budgeted to, to increase that to the, to almost double what it was. I think last year we did about twelve thousand dollars. This year we went to about twenty-one thousand dollars in that because we anticipated having that support for MAG and then MAG has had to make changes on their funding side.
So it's budgeted, but not funded necessarily?
It is budgeted, but, but so, so the expenditure is budgeted, but now some of the revenue has gone away. So we will have to find funds in our general fund to transfer to the seniors account to be able to fund the gap.
Okay. Thank you.
Do we have the money there?
Well, we're really early in the year, so the answer is we probably will have some there, but we don't know at this point in time. We'll just keep going and, and as we try to, to look at the budget and as we get further down the road, we get other revenues in, we look at how building permits are doing, all those types of things. We will know where we're at, at a later date when we bring that budget amendment to you.
Are there any funds that we could use for this aside from like, uh, the general fund? Are there any like special things we get? No?
No, this is the only, there's only two funding sources for this particular program. One is from the general fund and one is from MAG. Now there are additional general fund funds that are already budgeted and those haven't gone away. But this would just be an additional transfer from the general fund to be able to fund the gap. Or again, the other only option is to reduce services. That's the, those are the two options that we have.
How popular is the Tuesday lunch?
So you have a mayor pro temp that can help you out with that, but my understanding is that, that it's about half or maybe a little bit more than half of the Thursday lunches. But we anticipate that that will continue to grow just because people are kind of getting used to it, right? And, and, and those types of things. And so we would anticipate maybe in a year or two, it might be as popular as the Tuesday meals. There's some cities around us that do five meals a week, five days a week. And that obviously is a big, as a big, uh, commitment. I'm not sure we could even do that right now because we take the two of the other two days during the week to prepare for the meal because it's a home cooked meal. We don't, most of the other communities around us do not do home cooked scratch meals. They do. They bring it in from the prison or the school district or something like that where they're bringing in basically mass, mass produced food, which is not, uh, necessarily as good a quality.
Attendance today was roughly around thirty.
So it's maybe a third or, of, of what we have. But again, I think that that varies, right? I think we've seen as much as forty. And so we were getting close to half, but again, that's something that we can look at as we go along. We'll take direction from the council. If you want to give us some direction, there's no action on this tonight. We're just bringing this to you as information so that you can understand where we're at and that will.
This is the first year we've done the Tuesday lunch, right?
Yeah, we did a pilot last year.
Yeah.
And it was, I think it was two months worth and it again.
For two months, yeah.
It, 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 we just went through it and they thought it was a good idea to bring it back. And so that's where we're at with it.
People are used to still having doctor's appointments and things on Tuesday. So you have to take a little while to transition.
Sure. Not only that, but remember the funding that we're getting in this contract is actually three thousand dollars less than what we were getting last year. So that actually starts cutting into even the Thursday meals potentially for that budget shortfall for that portion of it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Susan, I, I have a question. So does this, does this contract allow us to do take home? I, I forget, wasn't there something about take home and allowing them to take?
There's a provision that the contract mandates that this program be available for shut-ins.
That's correct.
Okay. So that is included at least, even though it's lower, that's still included.
And, and we did that all the way through COVID when, when we weren't having meals. They could come and pick that up. And so we still have our, maybe you can give us an idea. We probably still have a half a dozen meals or more that go out every week to homes because some of the seniors that attend know of the shut-ins and they take them to them. So we, we already do that. That is, so just to be clear, this is the, the requirements in the, in the agreement are basically the same requirements that we've had for the last, I don't know, decade or so. The last agreement that I saw sign was in twenty seventeen and this is nearly word for word, that same agreement. And so they're not really changing the stipulations. It's just the funding amount here that's changing.
Correct. Anything else on that subject? If not, um, Norm, you want to move on to that training?
Sure. So mayor pro temp and council, we, uh, received this paperwork back from ULCT last week or the week before. And this is a discussion on political activities of public entities act. So this is a state legislative action that basically limits what you as elected leaders and what we as staff can do when it comes to political activities. Okay. It defines, I'm just going to jump through this really quick. I'll send it out and put it in the minutes. Um, public entities are defined as, you know, subdivisions, state entities, that type of thing. Public officials are all of us, right? Either elected or appointed or hired are all public officials to be able to, as, as talked about in the act. And then it talks about public funds. So you can kind of see where we're going here is that we can't use public funds for any type of political activity. For or against a proposition, uh, for against a candidate, for against a cause, those types of things. If it's political in nature, we absolutely cannot use city funds. Now, I, I would go so far as to caution and make sure that if you're using your personal email on your phone, my, my phone will do this sometimes where it'll actually send out a work email. And I don't catch that it's putting my, my personal email on the send from the, the from category. So just be really careful because there can be a two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollar fine if you even use your work email, your, your city email to support a candidate or to, um, act, uh, to, to be, uh, to advocate one way or another on any position. So this is something that's very, very important. I want to make sure that you guys understand that, that we can't use any public funds. You can't, you can't come and use an office and, and bring somebody in and, and promote politics or not, or be derogatory or opposed. Whatever the, the proposition may be, remember that we've got some ballot propositions. We've got, uh, uh, is it amendment D to the constitution? Is it amendment D or it's something D? I don't remember what it is, but that's still being fought out in the courts. So I, I'm not going to get political here. I just want to make sure that you guys understand that we as a city have to remain neutral. Now we can put out factual information. If somebody asks us a question and we can provide factual information that is not our opinion, you know, the sky is blue. That's factual information, you know, and, and of course I'm just using that as a, as a, you know, but the, the fact of the matter is, is that if we put factual information out, we can do that. Okay? Um, equal access, equal access is another item that let's say somebody comes in and takes five minutes at council meeting and is advocating for you as a council to be against or for a proposition or a candidate. Okay? We, we have to give the opposing side of that their same opportunity to come and, and be in the, in the same, um, forum to be able to provide their case. Okay? I don't see that happening here because there's not really any ballot propositions or anything that we're doing. But there are some pretty hot topics on the state level and the national level that are getting a lot of attention and a lot of, I get texts almost every day from you should vote this way, or you should oppose this from political actions and all that kind of stuff. We just have to make sure that, that again, anywhere that we provide access to one, if we, if we, if we allow one party to have access in our newsletter, which we probably wouldn't do, we would have to have the opposing party give them the same opportunity. Okay? Same thing in public meetings. We can answer questions again with facts, right? Not, not perceived facts, but if we can back it up and say, okay, the sky is blue, then we can, we can answer questions or, um, do we have enough money to fund the seniors? The fact of the matter is right now we're looking for that, the rest of that funding gap, those types of things we can do. Again, it talks about email. You can, there's some specific in here that you can do for email. But you, there, I, I, again, I would not use any city email for any purpose of any political action. Political wrangling, anything of that nature. There are some, there are some things that you can do. You can answer questions in email that somebody has asked you. Again, factually, you can, you can talk about a projected permitted process or a, anyway, there's, there's A through H items in here that in my mind, get way down into the weeds that probably ought not to get down into. Um, no use of public funds, no use of public email, no other publishing. We can't even use a printer, a city printer to print some type of flyer that says you should vote one way or another, right? We can use it for factual information, but we can't use it for political persuasion purposes. Um, you still have your first amendment rights. You can, you as your person can talk to anybody on the street and, and say, hey, I think you ought to vote this way, or this, I don't like this about that candidate or this proposition. You can use your phone for that. You can use your personal email for that. You can use lots of personal things to be able to have that so long as we're not using public funds or resources. In other words, you can't meet somebody at city hall and go out on the front step and stump for or against something, right? That's, that you should not be doing that. Um, we can use research. We, we can use our, our, uh, website to research information or arguments that have been conducted or collected by the public entity for the purpose of advocating for or against a, again, factual information, right? So we're not putting an opinion out there. So long as the mediums are used by the public, right? Official is not owned or controlled by the public entity. Okay? Your Facebook pages, your personal, uh, websites, whatever it happens to be, you can do whatever you want on those. But the minute that you start looking like or acting like a city official that's stumping or candidateing for, you know, proposals or, or ballot initiatives, that's when we're going to get in trouble. Again, emails, be very careful. Your phone will play tricks on you. The, you send an email reply back and it goes to somebody from your personal email or your work email when it's supposed to be personal, then just be really careful about that. Don't use public funds. Don't use public emails. I, you kind of see a theme here, right? So the, the penalties that apply again could be as much as a thousand dollars and six months in jail. Um, that's the, that's the more extreme. If somebody, um, for a first violation is two hundred and fifty dollars and then a thousand for any subsequent. Now, if you send a group of emails and you do that, then that email is only considered one email, not fifty emails to one email to fifty different people. Right? Again, but please don't get into the realm of, you don't want to even be looking at fines and, and jail time, right? calculation of the penalty, penalty is based on how often a person presses. And, and I'll be honest with you. In my, in my seventeen year career working with the city, I've seen this on, on government email accounts and government websites. You just got to be really, really careful to not get in that realm. Have your personal opinion and talk to people and, and politic and do all the things that you do in your personal time. Just don't do it on city property or appearing to be any form of a city official while you're doing it. Okay? Any questions? I, I apologize that that's probably lengthy, but it is very, very important that we don't find ourselves in the wrong place. Questions? Okay.
Thank you. The next item is a discussion regarding the use of the new city cemetery property. I know we were polled individually about that. I don't know the results of that polling.
I don't know the full results of that polling either. I know there was a couple of council members that said that they would be okay with it. I know that there was one that said that probably was not a good idea. And, uh, so the mayor has talked to each of you individually about, do we, so we have this fifteen acres that we're likely not going to do anything with for cemetery purposes for some time. What do we do with it? Do we let somebody use it for business purposes? Do we let somebody use it to graze their horses? Do we let somebody use it to farm alfalfa? Where are they going to get the water? Right? So those types of things. So uh, just as a, as a backup to that, I did visit with, with our legal counsel on that and, and he and I both recommend that anything that we do there, we do with a contract and with some type of remuneration. Now it doesn't have to be a lot. Maybe it's X number of dollars per month to let horses graze on there, right? I don't know the answer to that, but there ought to be at least a, a contract that would include a couple of things. Indemnification, if a horse gets over and falls over on a fence stake and dies, we're indemnified. It's that they provide their own insurance for what they're doing and that, that, that's part of the contract. And then also, uh, some type of remuneration. Now we're not trying to necessarily go out and go gangbusters and make a ton of money on that property. But if somebody's going to use it for other than city purposes, it certainly ought to be under those parameters.
Is it fenced adequately enough to hold animals?
No.
So that would be on them to put a fence.
That would be, you're correct.
If we decided to do that.
That's correct. It's exactly right. And again, that can be written in the contract that they take on all liability and responsibility to keep the horses or the cattle inside of, uh, the, the property and not out on the road and on, on adjacent properties. I've seen that happen before fairly inexpensively. They can do that with a wire, you know, electric wire and just keep it up out of the weeds and stuff and they're fine. But yes, that, you're right. The, the whole north end of that property is open to the street to five hundred south. But also there's portions of it around that don't have any fence, either broken down or degrade, degraded or whatever like that.
My, my concern, um, I, I think that, that it should be used. I, I would just be concerned to make sure that whatever the contracted amount to use that property, that it's market rate, that we're not undercutting private businesses. Especially in that area, I know of, uh, multiple property owners that might be interested in doing something similar.
Sure.
And so, well, we're not out to make money. If we're not charging market rates, we're actually hurting our residents.
Yeah, I would concur on that. And, and again, we want the property. It sounds like you may want the property to be used and that's fine. We don't necessarily want to just sit it, sit there and have to kill the weeds, right? What, what do we do with it? But you're right. All those parameters would have to be worked out.
Is there ain't going to be any conflict with rolies? I know there are fall festivals coming up.
I, I can't answer that question for you.
I guess that would depend on what they're going to put there.
That's exactly right.
Where they want to put it.
That's exactly right.
My other thought though was this might be good fire mitigation.
Sure.
Those weeds in that grassy.
Well, and, and then at the same time, we have, right, a private individual that helps us with that on our, on our lagoon property where they just taking goats.
Yep.
And have a goat herder out there and we never have to mow it. It's great. But, but again, that may be some type of consideration that, that we need to, to look at.
When I first heard about this, my concern is what burden does this put on public works if we don't do something? Is public works going to be responsible for keeping the weeds down? And so it's not a fire hazard. Something to consider.
Do we spray the weeds? And just not allow them to grow.
Well, eventually we'll want sod there.
Yeah, as soon as we move into it to start doing for cemetery, absolutely.
I mean, you don't want to poison the ground.
So my experience with stuff like this has been fifteen acres isn't going to feed very many animals for very long.
Okay.
So if they planned on moving quite a few animals in, it'd probably be eaten off in a few weeks. Or if they're only going to put a few animals, it would probably keep them all summer and it wouldn't be a huge problem as far, or all winter as far as animals getting out or causing interference or things like that. So I guess it really just depends on how many and what.
It's, it's if, how, what, when, right? It's, it's all those, all those questions need to be answered. So what, what we've asked, we've had at least one, one entity that has come and asked and we said, send us a proposal. What, what, what's your proposal? We've not seen anything from that, but we'll see what happens and see where that goes. And obviously any kind of agreement that the mayor's asked to sign would come before the council for consideration.
Yeah. And I know there wouldn't be very much money to make on something like this. I think your standard pasture fee is like six dollars per animal per month or something like that. It's probably gone up with inflation and whatnot, but this wouldn't be a big moneymaker for the city.
But again, market rates, right? We'd want to find out what those market rates are and make sure that we're not undercutting somebody else being able to generate some revenue for themselves as well.
But we have responded to the one person that was interested in trying to do something.
Um, we've, we've asked for the, what their, what their proposal is.
Three seventy per acre.
There, there's two people that have, there, there's two entities, one person and an entity that have inquired. I don't know what's happened with the one person that asked that second time. I don't, that's up to the mayor and he was communicating with him. So I don't know. He may have just said, hey, we've got to take it to the council and find out where we go. And it, it wouldn't need to be a lengthy or, or difficult agreement, right? It could be a couple of pages probably and then just go from there. So.
My opinion is just, I think everything is included in a contract with what we've said tonight. Everything is on them. They need insurance. We go market rate. I have no problem with renting that ground or making use out of it. I think that does eliminate uh, having our public works have to take care of weeds. It keeps it eating down. There's nothing wrong with that. I think it's a good idea.
Sure.
I, I think when, when we were purchasing that property, there were other parties that were interested in using that, maybe some of the neighbors.
Yeah, that's one of the entities that we're talking about and then another, another resident.
I think that, that if, I, I would just make sure that we reach out to everyone that has expressed interest. Um, so that they.
Yeah, again, I, I know that the mayor has indicated, send us your proposal and let's talk about it. So at this point, we've not seen a proposal. So to, to me, that's on them to, to give us a proposal, what they would propose to do with it.
Good discussion. Does anyone have any other, uh, comments or ideas about this? Okay, then let's take a look at the agenda for the meeting at seven. Are there points you want to cover, Norm?
Yeah, I'll just go through things rather quickly. And if you have questions, stop me. So you've got bills, minutes from the previous meeting. Bills, uh, we'll look at the building permits, resolution oh nine oh two is the, is the, uh, cooperation agreement between Santaquin City, Payson and Ephi for law enforcement operations. This is for a strike force unit that would be comprised of the three entities to help curb illegal activity in the three, uh, jurisdictions. It's a, it's either all or partially state funded as far as any kind of equipment. There's no vehicles or anything of that nature, but likely vests and guns and other things that, that may come along with that. I, I don't know any of those details. But if there's equipment that's needed, it's funded by the state and it's just up to us to operate it, uh, the three entities to operate it and participate as we are able to do so.
In the memo from chief first, he just outlined that most of the extra expense would be just, uh, our salary.
It will be that, on our side of things, it will be. Again, there are, my understanding is that there are some state funds. I don't know the amount of it. And I don't know what the extent of it is, but I do know that, that, that was one of the reasons why we were going into it is because there's some state funding that's available to help out with the effort. My.
That, that is a lot of it. They, they're going after some grants and those kinds of things. But the agreement does allow for, uh, participation, uh, in purchasing equipment and those kinds of things. And it is basically operated, uh, by the chiefs.
Right. But, but.
But my, I guess it doesn't concern me a lot because if you don't like the way it's going, you simply withdraw.
Right. Within thirty days, right? You have thirty days to withdraw. So a, again, budget wise, if there is any budget impact with us, obviously that would have to come from the budgeting process, which currently we don't have anything budgeted for that. So that, that would just have to go through the budget process through either an amendment or as we go through the, the budget process next year. If the chief asks for some funds from our side of things, then that would have to go through the budget process.
This is something that helps keep our city safe, which we've always been in favor of, at least as long as I've been on the council. And I think, um, we look at it as we go, if it becomes a major budget issue, but I don't see it being that. I think we need to make our city as safe as possible and keep it that way.
Agreed. And there's other benefits as well on that is that it helps to train our, our staff, right? It helps to train our police officers in those types of activities to be able to learn more about those concerns.
And I was going to mention that in the meeting at seven, that I, I appreciate chief first trying to develop his staff and, and.
Yeah.
Keep it safe.
Train, train them to be able to handle these kinds of situations.
Yeah. Agreed. So item number four, resolution oh three, oh, uh, oh nine oh three is the MAG agreement that we've already talked about for the funding. Just under nine thousand dollars available for that. This is really just a re-up of the contract with a different amount than what we've done in the past. And ordinance number, uh, oh nine oh two.
Bring that up.
Yeah, this, this is another one of those state code, uh, updates. It's, I think, really the, the main changes that are in this one are, are related to the, the timeframes in which applications need to be turned in, that sort of thing, kind of shot clock related type of, type of stuff. So, um, you know, Ryan Harris has worked hard to, to look at our code and make sure that we're in compliance with, with new state regulations. So there's, there's a whole bunch of little things in there, but I feel like that's kind of the, the gist of it is a lot of just uh, making sure the, the timeframes are, are correct and, and in harmony with state code.
Review times, turnaround times, those types of things.
We're just, just trying to align our code with state.
That's correct. And then the last item, uh, discussion of possible action on the ward of the foothill village playground. So I sent, I, I created a new memo and just to bring the council up to speed, if you didn't see my text. Basically the, we, we got additional information. We had a request from, from public works to say, hey, how much does it really cost to put the pour in place, the, the rubberized stuff in there versus the wood chips? Cause the wood chips get blown away, they degrade, they get thrown out by the, the participants in the playground. They end up in the grass. We end up mowing them and we have to, you know, we get slit, well, we get slivers, but then we also have, they, they dull our, our blades on our mowers. And so it's, it's a big, it's a big maintenance issue. And so what we looked at is by the time we take out the wood chips and put in the pour in place and have a little bit less excavation, a little bit shallower, um, mow strip around it, it's a, it's a twenty thousand dollar delta to put the pour in place in there. So about thirteen, fourteen percent more on the, on the current budget for the project to add that pour in place. And it's got a lot of longevity to it. It's got a lot of benefits and, uh, mu- much easier on the toes and the piggies for the little kids and.
How often do you have to replace those wood chips too? They only last three or four years. This you won't have to replace for a long time.
Right. You, I don't know the life frame on it, but I would imagine you probably get at least fifteen or twenty years out of it easily, if not longer.
Does it get hot in the summer? Do you know?
Um, so the one that we have at Harvest View, if you go out to Harvest View, we have that playground north of the pickleball and, and we've never had any concerns or complaints about that. I think it depends a lot on the color. This is a two-tone or a two-color piece. And I don't know the logistics on it, but they, they recognize that and they have all these, if you remember, we went to a, some of you went to a playground in, in St. George that had this at ULCT a couple of years ago or last fall. And maybe it was, anyway, and they have it down in St. George. So if they can live with it in St. George, it's going to be fine here.
I, I think this will be good. This is going to be one of the first parks with shade built in as well.
Yeah.
Which will make it cooler. And the Harvest View Park, because of that cushy ground is actually like a very popular park.
Yeah.
Among the young families in the community because it's a good park, but it also, I, I think kids enjoy that.
Well, and I think.
It's not really hot.
I think the, the, the delta on it is really not that bad. I mean, we, I think on that one at Harvest View now, it's a much larger playground. I want to say we spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars putting that pour in place in out there. I want to say we spent a hundred and ten thousand dollars putting that pour-in-place in out there. Now, it's a considerably bigger, but for a twenty thousand dollar delta, I think that's a very good use of funds, and there are funds available to do that with. We would bring that back to you, both this one and the the MAG agreement, we would bring back to you in a future budget amendment. We just didn't have time to to prepare all of that before the meeting today.
Any other discussion about that item? Are there anything that any of you want to bring up before we adjourn? I don't hear anything, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second that.
Counsel and Keel?
Aye.
Meekum?
Aye.
Sit away.
Aye.
Del Rosario?
Aye.